Good evening. I'm Sarah Marshall. I'd like to call this meeting of the Amherst School Committee to order at 5:01 PM on Monday, March 4. Because we are meeting virtually, I need to make the roll call to make sure everybody can hear me and be heard. Irv Rhodes, are you here?
I am here.
I can hear you. Jennifer?
Present.
Is, ah, there's Bridget. Bridget Hines, can you hear me?
And Bridget is not showing up.
I think she's just, I'll come back in a moment. Deb Leonard, are you here? Bridget Hines, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, wonderful. So we have four out of five. All right, I'd like to explain the agenda a little bit. I know a lot of people are interested in getting to the town council meeting. So what I would like to do is split the public comment into two parts. And first, we will hear any live comment and seven recorded voicemail messages for no more than half an hour total. Then we'll move into the new business, which is discussion of additional funding from the town of Amherst. And then we will go back to public comment only to, so I can scroll through all the written comments that were received by three o'clock. All right, so with that said, if there are members of the public who would like to make a comment now, please raise your hand. And you will have, you will have three minutes, so. And if, everybody should mute themselves, I think. Oh, Deb Leonard is here. Can you just say hello?
Hello.
Okay, thank you. All right, everyone is here. All right, Allegra Clark, please enter the, unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Hello, everybody. My name is Allegra Clark. I am a parent of a Wildwood first grader and I did graduate from the regional high school. I was just joining tonight to say that I really appreciate the extra funding from the town. I am glad that we'll be able to restore the special ed positions and the para at the preschool. I do think that it would be a little bit short sighted to send the remaining funding from the town to the regional district. And I say that understanding that the cuts proposed at the regional district are very large as well. I think my concern would be that over the years, we hear time and time again, we need to ask town council for more money. But if we're sending the more money that they gave us to the regional district, I think that could hurt the Amherst schools in the long run when I'm anticipating there will be another budget shortfall every year because that's how it seems to go. And I just am concerned that there would be a precedent set if we sent money to the district from the elementary school, that they would then say, well, why are we going to give you extra money if last time we gave it to you and you still had a cut to make, you gave it away? So that's my concern. I also just wanna remind the committee of the February 13th meeting where we had about forty parents and students and teachers talking about the importance of both the special ed program and the music program. So I do think that maintaining the cut to the music program would be a really detrimental thing to our district. I think that we need all the additional support and enrichment for our students that we can get. And I really would ask that once the committee has the opportunity to discuss the proposal from today's memo, that the committee will consider not adopting that suggestion and keeping the remainder of the funding in the elementary schools in part so that we can show the town that when we get extra money, we use it. So that's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next, and remember to put, thank you, lower your hand. Kyle Fuziker, if that's how, please enter the room. Correct this pronunciation of your name, please. I forgot to say, state your name, where you're from, and then you have three minutes. Kyle?
We can't hear you, Kyle.
You are muted.
Is it working now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate finding time and carving out space to hear from, I think, really the ultimate stakeholders of these conversations, which is the students and their parents. That should be at the center of all of these decisions. I think it's easy to, from distance, see music programs, art programs, and extracurricular programs as just that, as extracurricular. However, speaking from my student, my children's point of view, band has been a catalyst for incredibly impactful emotional and social change. When we choose to announce our values through budgets and through balance sheets by first affecting those that we deem not important and, and those programs being directly interfaced with the students, I think it's just the epitome of why we see erosion in public trust. We are making decisions on paper and not about the impact of how it affects the actual growing minds of our students. And I just believe that it's foresighted, I mean, short sighted, and I, I, I think it is such a slippery slope. And as I mentioned last time, there's consensus among parents and individuals that bringing students out of their shell, bringing them away from screens, having them interacting and using a creative part of their brain is of utmost importance coming out of the pandemic. And it is just appalling that we are considering eroding that at this incredibly important time coming out of the most difficult portion of, of our country's history in the, in the, in the recent years. So I beg that we think very clear minded about where we put our values.
Thank you. Next is Ariel Templeton. Please unmute yourself. Tell us where you live or your connection to the district. And you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ariel Templeton. I am a resident of Amherst and the director of the band programs at Wildwood, Fort River, and Cocker Farm. I have taught in the Amherst district for five years, in the public schools since 2007. And prior to 2007, I subbed for the Amherst schools, often for band and orchestra. At that point, the high school and middle school instrumental programs still had four teachers instead of two, and we had one of the best music programs in western Massachusetts, if not the state. It was a thriving program that drew many students to the district. I understand that the district is facing a serious budget crisis right now. Our family is feeling this profoundly as my husband teaches at the regional schools and doesn't know the future of his program. Our elementary program is in jeopardy, and we have two children on IEPs who would likely feel the impact of cuts to the special education budget. Teachers throughout the district are all impacted by this budget news and uncertainty. To say morale is low is an understatement. There is a lot up in the air, but there are some things that are certain in the midst of all of this. What is certain is that by making cuts to the instrumental program, you will be taking instruments out of the hands of students who cannot afford out of school lessons, taking instruments from students, many of whom do not feel connected to school, but look forward to band or orchestra every week. It keeps them engaged and coming back. It gives them confidence in themselves. It gives them a community. It keeps them in the district. You will be taking that away. What is certain is that by making cuts to the instrumental program, you will be hurting the future of the middle school and high school bands and orchestras. Students will come into the middle school ensembles with much less experience, particularly once the sixth grade moves to arms. Ensembles will be smaller, students won't be able to do the same level of music, and most importantly, ensembles will not reflect our diverse population. They will reflect students who have resources for lessons and instrument rentals out of school, students who come from privilege. What is certain is that by cutting Lincoln Smith, yes, let's say his name, you will be leaving Heather Sampson and myself to run a program that is not sufficiently staffed for our numbers. Without fourth grade, our projected number of returning students will be at least 250, not including new fifth and sixth grade students. We could easily hit 300 students at least. Two teachers spread between multiple schools cannot do this without the program, students and instrumental teachers suffering. Our team has been able to keep the program running despite increasing scheduling and space limitations in recent years. However, we cannot find a creative solution for losing our teammate. What is certain is that we will ultimately lose students not only from the instrumental program, but the district as a whole. As it is, we are already losing many students to private schools and charter schools. Cutting back from programs like the instrumental program will have a very high price tag when students who otherwise would stay because of our program leave. What is certain is that I have spent countless hours not being present for my family in recent weeks, fighting for this program, but I will continue to fight for it because I believe in it and see the joy it brings our students. Our district and town collectively need it.
Three minutes. It's been three minutes. Can you finish?
We need to do better for our students. We owe them that. I urge you to consider, reconsider the elimination of my colleague Lincoln Smith in the fourth grade instrumental program and vote no to the superintendent's proposed plan.
Thank you. Sherry Dory Hop Cohen, please unmute yourself. State your name and your connection to the district, please, and then you have three minutes.
Yes, you actually pronounced it perfectly. So, yeah. My name is Sherry. I'm an Amherst resident. I'm also an alum of UMass Amherst and a current faculty member at the University of Connecticut. And my husband happens to be a senator at UMass who also recently co-chaired the committee from the Senate on childcare needs and, for, for the Amherst and sort of UMass oriented communities. What, what I can say as a parent of two school age, sorry, one preschooler and, and one school age children is that, you know, any cuts to our education at any level are going to have downstream impacts for future grades. As Ariel rightly pointed out, you know, there, there are downstream impacts on future grades. So, you know, when we're looking at cuts to preschool, that means we're, we're looking at kids who will have a harder time integrating in kindergarten. We know that Cocker Farm special ed program is absolutely amazing. And I, for one, as a child with an IEP, can tell you that the odds of my, my child being able to be fully integrated into a regular kindergarten without an IEP are, are only possible because of the hard work of the staff working at the preschool level. I, you know, my family and I are incredibly grateful to the super hard work of the Cocker Farm team, the paras, the professionals. We're talking speech OT, teacher for the deaf and hard of hearing. You know, all of these things, if cut, whether in the preschool level or the elementary school level, are gonna have downstream impacts on the students that we send to middle school and high school. And those in turn will have an impact on our students' ability to function in, in the university level. That was actually the point of a 50-page report that my spouse just finished for the UMass Senate, stating that childcare needs across all the Amherst community are severely under-resourced and, and need, you know, under capacity. We, we have over 300 children on the waitlist, 300 families, excuse me, on the waitlist for the UMass Center for Early Education and Care. If we take away money from Cocker Farm preschool, that number will just grow even more. Let's not, let's not, you know, abandon our mothers who cannot necessarily get back to work if they don't have childcare needs met. We know that childcare disproportionately impacts women and minorities. The availability of a public preschool in Amherst, which is one of the only towns in the region that has one, is, is something that is a great equalizing force in our community. So I just wanna strengthen the calls to reject budget cuts and do our best to fight them whenever we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Exactly three minutes. Ruthie Killo Hill, you can unmute yourself, but I, I intend to play your voice message. So would you instead like to speak?
Just briefly, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm in the car.
So, so is this, is, excuse me, is this instead of your voice message?
No, just, you had sent me an email about why is this too connected with, with elementary, and it said there's a trickle down. I also wasn't clear, even though I thought I was pretty much abreast of all of the cuts, that, that there's still some elementary school positions being potentially eliminated. And just once again, as you hear my message, the same thing, just that the most, what's most beneficial for kids are those who have the most direct contact, and we have data, multiple data sources that support that. So, thank you. That's all I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you. Carolyn Walker, you can unmute yourself. Please state your name if it's not what I just said, and tell us your connection to the district, and then you have three minutes.
Carolyn Walker, I feel like I've spoken a lot at these meetings. I'm a mother of two kids in the district. I am a alum of the, of the program, of the music program, of class of 2002. I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a musician and a music teacher in the area. And I just have to say that getting rid of fourth grade instrument lessons will end up killing the program. And we as a town have to decide, and it feels like it's already being decided for us, do we want to have a music program in our public schools? And it seems like this is a no. Is, are we really okay as residents not having a music program in our town, knowing how strong a program we have had in the past and knowing that with funding, we can have a strong program again? So that's, that's the bottom line, that this, these cuts are incredibly short sighted. This is, this is showing the future of our program. And really, honestly, I have two kids in the program. I'm, I'm ready at this point to walk and say, you know, homeschool, we can't do anymore. Like, there are problems with the middle school. There is so much going on in the school system that we really need to think as a town. How can we have a heart? Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen JG, please unmute yourself. Give us your name and your connection to the district, and then you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Ellen Jedri Gadera, and I'm a resident of Amherst. I have two kids at Cocker Farm, and one in the preschool and one in fourth grade. And I've spoken before, but I just wanna reiterate, I guess, the point that our family moved here in 2018 specifically for the Amherst school district. My husband graduated from high school here. We have family here, but we came here for the schools, and I hear that time and time again. It's for the special education, you know, the paras and the preschool, I see them every day when I drop my daughter off. She gets help from a para for a medical issue if she needs it. They're just so critical. And they helped my oldest daughter so much, who's now in fourth grade and works with a special ed teacher. And also, just as important is the violin lessons that my older daughter has been taking, taking every week this fall, and she loves it. And music is such an outlet for her. She has an ability to hear and think about things in a way that I could never do. And I just so appreciate what the music instruction has done for her. So every one of these cuts affects our family in some way. And as, in the big picture, I mean, that's why we came here, you know, for the community, for Amherst, because we knew the town prioritized education. And it just feels like the way it's going, we are gonna need to leave. And we don't want to. But the, the cuts proposed both for elementary and of course for the middle school and high school are, are pretty horrifying. So I will say it again, but anything we can do to work together to try to find a solution, whether it's working with Amherst College and developing a strategic plan and needing volunteer hours for something like that, I know parents would be behind you. Or the legislators that are, that we're working with and talking with them more about the pilot program. I mean, there's other solutions, but for right now, if we can ask town council, please find a way to not make any of these cuts. Do not cut the music instruction. Do not cut the special education teachers. Do not cut the paras. Sorry, I didn't have anything prepared, so little rambling there, but thank you.
Thank you. All right, let me just update everybody where we are. I'm gonna take the next three people in the queue. Then I'm going to play the recorded messages, and then we will move on to the, the new business. And then after we're done with that, I will display and roll through all the written comments. So I'm gonna take Yasuaki, Ella, and Kathleen, and that's, that'll be it. Yasuaki Suzuki, please unmute yourself, repeat your name, tell us where you, your connection to the district, and you have three minutes.
Yes, actually, I just wanted to mention, there's one more person after Kathleen.
I know, I'm only taking the next three. People keep jumping, and I have to, I have to move on to the other comments. So go ahead.
All right. Hello, my name's Yasu Suzuki. Currently, I'm the orchestra director at both Amherst Middle and High School. I'm also Amherst resident of almost 20 years with my wife working in the district, and both my children attended and attending the district. So as you can tell, that my whole family is very invested in the district. Today, once again, I beg and urge you not to have any cuts to elementary instrumental program. What I don't understand is this. I went to see the elementary school concerts here in Amherst right before the pandemic in January 2020. What I remember is that the number of students that were in the band was much smaller. Despite the odds being virtual, these elementary instrumental teachers somehow miraculously inspired so many students, came back and faced the challenges of trying to teach instruments in safe way during the COVID hybrid opening, yet persisted while learning instruments. Juggling all the complications of COVID guidelines, he has still inspired students with joy of learning instruments. I was fortunate enough to see the elementary school band and orchestra concert just a few weeks ago. I couldn't believe the number of students and the size of the ensemble that were involved and sharing the joy of music. So if I were an outsider and saw that elementary ensemble concerts, I would have thought, I'd be shocked, and I would assume that Amherst must be known for their music program. The other thing that a lot of people don't realize is that these elementary school instrumental programs provide an emotionally safe space for so many students. Not everyone thrives academically, not everyone is an athlete. Music instrument program provide a place for them to try new things without being judged. This program provides students who are struggling a chance to find their voice in different media. I cannot stress enough how important fully funded elementary instrumental music is. Losing the opportunity to learn instruments in fourth grade will be devastating move. As you know, developmentally, losing a year of learning will come with serious consequences. Just imagine having to lose four years of math or English during the crucial time of children's developmental states. I don't think I have to explain this. I don't know if I have to say this, but elementary programs are foundation of anything that comes after. You always see the output of these programs at the high school level, but what you don't seem to realize is that without the initial input at the elementary level, there won't be quality output at the middle school or high school. From my observation, after the COVID, we're finally getting our momentum back. It's safe to say our performing arts department from elementary school to high school is thriving. Just imagine this way, would you cut any athletic program if they keep ranking places? This said Superintendent Slaughter. Have you been to any of the elementary orchestra band concerts? When this budget cut was proposed, I believe Ms. Templeton gave you a personal invite to the many of winter concerts that just took place a few weeks ago.
Excuse me, your time is up, can you, can you wrap up?
I'll wrap it up. Also, when she didn't see you at the concert, she also sent you videos of very successful concert. Did you watch any of those? It's very unsettling to know that the fate of our programs are in the hands of superintendent and adamants who don't show up when they have a chance to learn about the program. How can you make a wise decision when you don't see what the program provides for our community? Please vote no for this budget cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ella Templeton Suzuki, please state your name if I didn't pronounce it right, tell us connection to the district, and then you have three minutes.
Um, my name is, my name is Ella Templeton Suzuki, and I go to Fort River School, and I am in the fourth grade, and I am also in the band. My favorite day in the week is always Tuesdays, because those are the days I get to have my lessons in band. And I also get to deliver the percussion cart with my friend Ruby to Mr. Smith. I think if they get rid of anything, really, it might just be, I don't know, just maybe I ready, I guess. I mean, we could have books, I'm sure. But whenever Mr. Smith walks into my class, everyone gets so excited to see him. Mainly, I don't want my mom, Ms. Templeton, or Ms. Sampson's job to be even more complicated, and it would be really sad to some of the kids in the fourth grade and more. The kid, all the kids in the fourth, most of the kids in the fourth grade that play an instrument and usually seem to look forward to having their lessons. And, I mean, I think they would be really sad if they didn't have Mr. Smith to teach them. And seem, a lot of students stay in the program because of Mr. Smith's enthusiasm for music. Mr. Smith is one of my favorite people in the district, and he seems to just be a friend to everyone, and that is why you should not cut Mr. Smith. This may not be very persuasive, but the fact that some kids are getting up to speak at meetings for the music program, and Mr. Smith shows how much they, um, like Mr. Smith and the music program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, our last comment before I move to the messages is Kathleen Mitchell, please unmute yourself. State your name if I didn't get it right, your connection to the district, and then you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Mitchell. I'm a parent to two children at Fort River and a resident of Amherst. And I'm here tonight to urge you to reject the proposed budget cuts as they stand. Cutting the fourth grade instrumental program would mean more than simply delaying the start of lessons by one year. It would be yet more erosion of a program that has already been cut significantly and will impact the quality of the overall music program across all grades and widen the inequity in terms of who is able to participate. The instrumental program offers so much to our children, well beyond the mastery of an instrument, and eliminating one year of it will have a significant ripple effects for years to come. My family moved to Amherst from a community with a once extremely highly regarded school district that was further down the road than Amherst is in terms of gutting the public school budget year after year. I am here to tell you that there is a point after which the decline in school quality feels impossible to stop, let alone reverse. And I hope that you will sincerely listen to all the parents, teachers, and staff who are raising the alarm to tell you that our schools are already inadequately funded, that teachers are already drowning, and that our children are already paying the price. We are at a crisis point in this district. You were not elected to help the town of Amherst balance the budget. You were elected to ensure that our children have access to high-quality public education. In fact, many of you, in various candidate statements last fall, told us that one role of the school committee is to advocate for greater and fairer funding for our schools. I am asking you to do that now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this point, I'm going to share my screen and play the messages, and somebody let me know that, if you can really hear them. Hold on, okay.
My name is Yael Sierst, and I'm an Amherst resident, a Wildwood parent, and an ARPS educator. I was glad to learn about the proposal that the elementary and preschool special education positions won't be cut. However, I was dismayed by the fact that cutting the instrumental music position is still on the table. We continue to see cuts in those student-facing positions that don't translate to standardized testing scores or that are not legally required. But do we really want our district to offer bare bones education? The district is losing money by paying for students who attend charter and private schools, yet continues to cut what makes our district special. Can we say that we really value public education when we keep cutting in funding? The instrumental music program was already cut a few years back, losing a whole grade of instruction. And instead of restoring it, this budget suggests cutting it further and preventing students from accessing it until they are in fifth grade. I implore you to reject this austerity budget and to not cut student-facing positions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allegra Clark. I'm a resident of Amherst, and I am calling to ask that the school committee not vote to send the $95,000 to the regional district. I believe this would set a bad precedent, as Amherst has already increased its share of money that it's giving to the elementary schools. And if we are giving it away, I think that would send a message that we don't need it. So when we have to go back to them to ask for more money when there are more cuts, they'll say, well, you gave it away last time, so why would we give you more money? And I think that would set a bad precedent. I understand the severity of cuts across the board, both at the elementary level and at the regional level, but I would implore you to use the money to save the music teacher position, as then all of the money that was given to the elementary schools will be spent in the elementary schools. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Bectold. I'm the head of performing arts for the middle and high school, and also the head for PE and health at the high school. I'm speaking on behalf of my departments and also the exploratory departments, particularly at the middle school. These include the following folks: Ashley Dunn, Marcia Gomes, Chris Spinozzi, Kenny Ramos, Ben Coblen, Cara Kajibair, Todd Pruth, Yasu Suzuki, Remy Fernandez-O'Brien, and Tina Taylor. And we'd like to offer this shared statement. To the Amherst Regional School Committee, we are writing to you on behalf of the performing arts and exploratory teachers at the middle school and high school. We are deeply concerned about the proposed cuts for the fiscal year 2025 budget in the Amherst schools. In particular, we're concerned about the proposed cuts to the elementary instrumental program of music, as well as special education co-teaching. These programs are crucial to the support we provide our students, especially when considering the education of the whole child. We are just beginning to regain what we lost during the COVID-19 pandemic, which disproportionately affected our K-12 performing arts programs and the well-being of our students. Enrollment in elementary instrumental music is growing, and all three elementary instrumental music teachers are essential. Cutting the Pelham program and limiting instrumental music to fifth and sixth grade only, both of which will happen with this proposed cut, will severely and negatively impact our band and orchestra programs, not just at the elementary level, but all the way for years through 12th grade. In addition, this will also lead to a significant increase in the inequity between our students with and without the resources to pursue instrumental music outside of the school. Student enrollment in our special education programs have grown, and staffing is already stretched thin. These cuts will detrimentally affect our students' educational growth and their access to the exploratory curriculum. For all of these reasons, we are asking the Amherst School Committee to reject the proposed 2025 budget and find new budgetary solutions which will not harm our students' education and social, emotional learning. We urge you to keep the elementary instrumental programs and special education programs intact. Our students are depending on your support. Thank you.
Whoops, whoops, nope.
Hello, this is a public comment for the school committee meeting today of March 4. My name is Cora Fernandez-Anderson, I'm an Amherst resident, and I have two children, one in seventh grade and one in fifth grade in the Amherst schools. I'm really calling because I thought the last school committee meeting that we went was very clear that all the community supports the continuation of the music program, and now I'm hearing that this is still as a, considered as a possibility to be cut and for music to start only later in fifth grade. I do believe, as we mentioned in last meeting, with all the kids being present, playing their instruments, and really sharing inspiring stories about how much the band and the orchestra matter to them, that this is one of the best programs that our district offers, and that it will be so disappointing if it gets cut and students can't start their music lessons early enough so as to be proficient to later be part of the middle school and high school band or orchestra. If this is cut, it's very likely that then a lot of students won't be able to get to the proficiency needed to join the ensembles in middle school, because no private classes are offered at that level. So this is, again, an issue of access for everybody to be able to enjoy music, to add music to their lives, and have that as an asset for the rest of their lives. Thinking about how good musical instruments and participating and playing together is so important for the mental health of our kids, for learning, for having an overall comprehensive education. So please do not cut music instruction. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Prindle. This is public comment for the school committee meeting today, March 4, 2024. I'm a parent in the Crocker Farm and Amherst Regional Middle School School District. I have spoken at previous school committee meetings about the budget cuts proposed to our school music program. I'm happy to see that the special education positions have been reinstated with the new funds offered by the town council, the $250,000 offered to the elementary district. I am shocked and disgusted that interim Superintendent Doug Slaughter proposes to continue to eliminate the instrumental music position, especially in light of the fact that more than 100 families came to the February 13th school committee meeting. And children also spoke about the importance of this music program in their social and emotional, to their social and emotional well-being. It seems like something very sinister is at play here, period. If interim Superintendent Slaughter is able to cut this money from the music budget right now, period, comma, it will serve to weaken our music program over the long term. This would be a very sad outcome for Amherst public schools. This would weaken our middle school and high school programs and allow the justification for more cuts in the future. I'm asking you, as a school committee, not to cut this funding to our music program. These funds do not need to be diverted to the regional school committee. We need to find an alternative way to fund the regional schools. This is unacceptable. Parents and families and children are relying on you to make the decision to keep these music programs in perpetuity. Cutting the instrumental program now will only make it harder for us to have a successful music program in the town of Amherst, and this will allow you to make future cuts to the middle and high school music programs. Our students deserve better. Superintendent Slaughter knows that these programs are popular. I'm very disappointed that he proposes to continue to cut these programs. He said that the most impactful way to spend the money was on the special ed program. The music program also benefits special education students. My son is autistic, and he has benefited from being in the band. We cannot cut this program. I'm sorry I cannot be there in person to speak to this issue, but I hope that you will take my comments to heart. Thank you.
Hello, this is Ruth Killow-Hill, leaving a message for the school committee, which is meeting tonight at 5:00 PM. I am a resident of Amherst, Massachusetts, and I work at Fort River School as a school adjustment counselor. I am also a member of the APEA. I'm calling about the budget cuts that are currently planned for positions at the high school and the middle school, both teachers and par educators. I strongly encourage the school committee to find other ways to meet the demands of our budget or to look for more funds. I looked at our neighboring Northampton schools, the public schools, and they have many fewer central office positions. They have for years. One might think, well, then maybe their educational services aren't as adequate. But when I look at the MCAS for 10th graders, even though this may not be what everyone wants to have our students doing as MCAS, still it's one data point to look at how we compare Amherst compared to Northampton. And their data for MCAS, both math, ELA, and including science, was a little higher than ours. So having some more in central office doesn't translate into students doing better. What does translate is having people available to the students. Last year, we talked many, at many school committee meetings, about the Amherst Middle School students being traumatized. Who they're going to access are the teachers and the par educators. The people most directly involved with students' lives has made a difference for all students, we have tons of data on that, who they have for classroom teacher, who they're having access to. An increasing class size in order to meet the budget demands is not to the advantage of our students. I don't want to pinpoint any particular administrative position. I don't want to pinpoint any particular administrative positions in our central office because one might think that I'm looking at individuals, and that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about what does our district support? What's the most important for our students? And I do think we could find some positions that don't need to continue in order to have teachers and paraeducators who work most directly to students be available to them. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
All right, one more.
Hello, this is Nina Mankin from District 1, calling to encourage you, as the school committee, not to give up on fighting for more money for the music program this upcoming year. It would be devastating to all of us who have younger children in the school district, particularly those who don't have the means to get musical training outside of the school. It would be devastating for this program to be cut. It would impact those students all the way up through high school. It's a critical component of our education system. It is a component that sets us apart from surrounding schools. It would be such a stain on us as a community if we were to lose this. It is part of what keeps people in the school system and not the sending their children outside the school system. Those of means have the capacity to do that, and every person we lose to a charter school costs us half the money. It would almost half the money it's going to cost to keep this position. I urge you with great passion to do everything you can not to cut this program, and in fact to vision it forward to be more robust and to set us apart in a way that builds our population and our values and the vision that we put forward to the world towards educating our children. Thank you. Please don't give up. Keep fighting. We stand behind you in that fight. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to our new business, which is discussion of additional funding from the town of Amherst for the FY25 budget and possible recommendation and vote. But before I give the floor to Superintendent Slaughter, I need to remind the committee of something, and the public should understand this, too. We are in a meeting of only the Amherst School Committee. This is not also a meeting of the regional committee, so we cannot discuss the regional school budget or speculate on or direct any money we might choose to give for any particular purpose. We have to confine ourselves to considering the elementary schools here. That said, it is widely known, it's quite public, that the regional school district faces a very large funding shortfall. So that's why we are here tonight with the proposal from the superintendent. Doug, do you want to?
Point of order, Sarah?
Yes?
Are you going to scroll through the public comment?
At the end.
At the end. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you. I'm going to share the memo that I attached to the agenda. Hopefully that will display. If I suddenly cut out, I'm sorry, I'm having some computer issues with regard to staying attached to the meeting. But nonetheless, so when the school committee last met on the 13th and 15th of February, we had a particular level of funding that we had from the town, and the nature of the reductions were itemized in this section of the budget, where we talk about a shortfall of revenues relative to expenses for maintaining what we had.
Excuse me, Doug, can you magnify this at all?
I can. I can.
Thank you. Super, thank you.
All right. There we go. That's presenting, okay. So one thing, actually, before I start on this, I do want to make one thing explicitly clear with regard to this. This line here that says reallocation of instrumental music to Pelham is merely the district asking Pelham to cover the cost of what it is receiving now. So there's no change in service at the Pelham Elementary School, and it is no reduction in the current program at the Pelham Elementary School. So they currently...
Doug, I think we lost you.
Sarah, while we wait for Doug, I did see there are a lot of additional hands, including my four-year-old, but there were a lot of people before me.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we're not taking comments from the floor right now. If it's a member of the committee, please speak up. I'm wondering if Debbie West... Oh, there's Doug again.
I'm sorry. Like I said, I'm having a little difficulty with my computer. But I did want to make it explicitly clear that there's no change to the Pelham instrumental music program. They're merely funding that program fully, as opposed to Amherst carrying some of the share of that cost. So that's all that's being represented by that line there. So for the Pelham folks, that's a clarification, and I think someone mentioned that as well in passing. Pelham is having no change in their instrumental music. However, so the Amherst School Committee meeting on the 13th and 15th of February, on the 16th of February, there was a meeting with the town of Amherst where they had gone back through their projections for the coming year and had recognized that they had some additional resources available. And so the recommendation was that instead of a 3% increase over fiscal '24, they could go to a 4% increase over fiscal '24. And so in the Amherst elementary budget, that's just under $260,000 of additional funding available. However, you know, the Amherst School Committee members are also members of the regional school committee. They, as Marshall noted, is they're experiencing a fairly severe set of reductions as well. And so the idea of whether or not to potentially use some of the available resources that have been made available to Amherst as support for the regional school budget is an idea for the committee to talk about this evening. As a result, I went back to each of the administrators in the buildings and asked them if that was the case, if we did not restore or use the entirety of that additional resource, what would be the things that have the most impact in your building and have the greatest impact on students in your buildings? And that's why the recommendation is in the memo to the school committee. I will say the following, however. The school committee can choose to do whatever it wants, and that's part of why we're having this, and I would like the committee to have that debate about what it is they do or do not wish to do with regard to the available funding to them.
Oh, we lost you. While he reconnects, I'll explain how I think our conversation should proceed. I would like someone... So his recommendation, which we can choose to approve or not, Doug, let me know when you're back in. I'm just explaining what I want to happen next.
So I should be back now? I'm sorry.
Okay. Why don't you finish?
Just to finish the point. So it is a circumstance where the Amherst School Committee could use the entirety of the $259, $331 that are available now that were not available prior to the 16th. If they do so, that's fine. It's certainly within the purview. It's also a consideration as to whether or not the reductions at the regional school level, which you also have a significant interest in as an Amherst school committee, is such that you might choose to fund some of these options here under reductions and not others. And so that's for you guys to decide and debate this evening and give me direction. As I said, I'd gone back to administrators and said, what has the greatest impact in your buildings? Besides the preschool paraeducator, the SE staff were considered next. All of those, all four of those positions can be returned to the budget. If that's the case, then the staff turnover of 9,000 would also need to be, would also need to be covered, and that would allow for about $15,000, just over $15,000 that could be shared with the regional schools. However, I think the debate for you guys to decide is what, and I would suggest only those four positions be the ones that you're sure, the others, certainly administration, the cost of living, the custodial staffing, that is all, I think, reductions that we can and should make regardless of our budgetary situation. And I think that it's for you to decide what and which of these four positions you would like to return or not to the Amherst budget, and therefore what potential support, additional support might be available to the regional schools. And so I, like I said, I went back to administrative staff, asked them what they felt was having the greatest impact, and that's what I put in the memo. But again, it's for you guys to decide and provide direction to me.
Okay, thank you. So if, what I suggest we do is have a motion seconded, so then we can debate it and vote on it. And if it fails, then we can move on to another motion involving a different amount of money. So I think I would like someone to move... But Doug, I'll need your language. Do we need to vote, or does it matter, to transfer, to donate, if we want to?
Point of order, Sarah.
Yeah. Point of order. Yes.
It's Jennifer. Hi. I don't think we're ready for a motion yet, and I don't think we need a motion on the table in order to discuss Doug's memo. I think when and if we're ready for a motion, we can discuss the motion language, but I don't think we need a motion yet, and I don't think we're ready for one yet.
I agree.
Okay. I mean, having a motion doesn't limit the discussion anyway. All right, that's fine. So let's open it up. The proposal is to use some of this extra money to fund the two special ed academic staff and the one preschool para, and give remaining $94,331 to the middle school. Please raise your hand if... Yes?
My hand is up.
Yeah.
So I really want to make sure that, of two things. One, that the instrumental music program is not cut whatsoever, and I want to make sure that that is very clear, that instrumental music program is not cut. As a, B, I want to go back to the previous meeting in which the, I think it was Fay Brady, talked about that if the reductions in special ed were made, that it would not have any material impact on the program. I need to make sure that Ms. Brady stands back of that.
Well, I think, Doug, do you want to speak? You're proposing to restore those special ed positions.
That's right. So I think the...
Just follow what Dr. Brady said.
I think that, you know, she was in the context of not having any of those four positions, and I think that the thing to keep in mind is that those positions provide in a...
Doug is having problems.
Yeah.
Maybe he should just call in.
Yeah.
But Sarah, again, I just want to make sure that the instrumental music program is not being cut, and I haven't heard that in a clear, convincing way yet.
Who else? Jennifer?
I have a question. So my question for Doug is, you're asking us for input tonight, but it seemed pretty clear from the last Amherst School Committee meeting that four of the five committee members gave you input to restore the instrumental position. And so can you help me understand why you didn't include the instrumental position in your recommendation memo?
As I said, I went back to the administrative staff in each of the buildings and asked them about, with new funding, what would your choice be relative to what you could restore first? It's not that they didn't want to restore all of it. They understand the context of the regional schools and the impact there, but I think they felt that the impact in their buildings for kids in special education as well as other kinds of intervention support that those, just to finish the other thought from earlier, those, the co-teaching model allows for our SE teachers to provide additional support in the classroom that would fall more specifically under intervention support and not as much special education. So they felt the impact on the largest number of students was by virtue of that. And so that's why I brought that to you as a point for consideration. But it's not that I didn't hear that the instrumental music, what you preferred, and certainly that's the direction you can go. And quite frankly, one instrumental music position and one para professional preschool would generate a more significant impact on the regional budget if you choose to go in that direction, or restore all four positions. It's your decision to make. I just want to give you the context of what the administrative staff in those buildings conveyed to me.
Okay, so as a follow-up to that, I want to say that, in theory, I'm not opposed to the regional school budget getting more than its fair share, if that's what you want to call it, of the funding. But I would only be in favor of that if the elementary budget didn't need it. Like, if we had extra, I would be in favor of, I would not have a problem with sharing our resources, but that's not the situation that we're in. We, both districts have really large budget shortfalls, so I am not in favor of having this $94,000 available to support the regional budget when that $94,000 can pay for the instrumental, the instrumental position with some, even some extra left over to give the committee action staff their colas. So I, in theory, I would be in favor of it, but in practice, I can't support this.
Deb or Bridgette wish to say something?
I also don't feel like I can approve this recommendation for the simple reason that in agreement with what Jennifer said, it would correspond to a cut at the Amherst level. Again, it's hard, it's hard to do this in the abstract, so without knowing the details of the regional budget and what budget relief it would provide, I can't justify any of these decisions. And in fact, I'm still surprised that, I feel like we've gotten conflicting guidance because I feel like it was pretty clear from February 15th that, from a programmatic point of view, the, is what Irv said, that the cuts in the SE staff would not have an impact on the students receiving the adequate services. So I thought we could be having a discussion about restoring the music program and possibly reallocating those other positions. So I'm just really confused and not able to make a definitive decision based on the information I currently have. That's it.
I don't know if Doug wants to respond at all to that, or...
I can a little bit. I think that the context of the regional schools is, you know, we were talking at our last meeting of the regional schools, the order of a dozen teachers being reduced out of the budget, among others, reductions. So I think that's, you know, we will have later in the week more specifics on where that actually impacts, but I think when you...
First person to see Doug suggest he call in.
Doug, I wanted to suggest, I usually wouldn't suggest you turn your camera off, but sometimes if you keep your camera off, it uses less resources.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I may need to do that to stay connected to the meeting. I keep dropping out. I think it's a specific problem with my computer. So I think the level of the reductions at the region are pretty significant regardless of the specifics. I think that a number of programs will be affected when we have that large number of cuts. That said, again, it is, what I'm seeking from the school committee is to entertain that notion relative, you know, so the proposal I brought to you was... So the proposal I brought to you was relative to conversations with I had, with I had, that I had with administrators about what had greater impact for them in their buildings. That's not to diminish what, what, uh, Dr. Brady said in hers, or what any of the, the testimony regarding instrumental music is. It's not that at all. I think it's a, it's a question for you guys to grapple with and then provide a guidance. Cause I'm, I'm, uh, asking for that particular feedback from you all about what, uh, priorities you want me to, to move forward with relative to this. And it could be to restore all four of those positions. That's certainly an option as well. So I think it's, it's, uh, your, your debate about what and how to leverage those resources that have become available.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I don't want to jump ahead of Bridgette though, just I, I'd like.
Follow up. Go ahead and then Bridget.
Um, looking at that real allocation of the instrumental music program to Pelham for the point two-two FTE. I'm just wondering if any of the positions that are in our Amherst budget. I know this is not specifically what we're discussing, but there's a lot of places where there's district staff. And I wanted to know if those positions had been considered balancing out those as well. And, and in particular, the point two-two-two, the point two-two confuses me because. We have a point eight-two for the strings teacher, but two band teachers, and I just. I, I know getting into the weeds isn't our job, but I just don't see how those numbers. Make. I, I, I would like to understand a little bit more about the splitting of those positions between Pelham and Amherst.
Can I suggest we take that up at our next school committee meeting? Or maybe you ask Doug. Offline because it's really, it really isn't. I mean, I understand.
It's not.
Get an answer, but it's, I don't think it's germane to this question before.
Okay.
Well, I, I would like to speak to how most staff that are shared gets, gets split if that's. So, so most staff that are shared, we use, uh. Uh. A, it, it, some of it's position dependent. So there's some folks that only work in the elementary schools. And so depending on, on Amherst versus Pelham, but generally we use enrollment as a broad metric for, for how we divide people's salaries. And so people that work for all three districts typically go with fifty-four percent in region. Uh, forty-two percent in Amherst and four percent in Pelham. In this particular case, it's, it, with the instrumental music, it has been at that point one-eight level for a long time. Whether it was tied to explicitly and accurately to, to, uh, strings or band is, is been an area that we have not attended too closely. Um, and what we're doing with that increase of point two-two in Pelham's budget, it's an increasing cost, not a change in what they're receiving. Uh, it's just having them cover the cost and then we'll divvy it up across. It would be point two in strings and point two in band, because that's actually the, how the staff, uh, serve Pelham.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Bridget. Oh, just a minute, or Bridget hasn't spoken yet.
Um, so I, I would just say like I reiterate what Irv and Jen said, the same exact things were in my notes. Like, I think at the last meeting, we were pretty clear, like everybody wants to see the instrumental music program continue. And we were all, you know, equally confused by sort of like the competing guidance between the different sets of administrators. I guess like, um, Dr. Brady was really clear that the IEP data showed that we didn't need. Those two SE positions, and then the principals do think we need it. And I think, um, you know, just when you've got that many sort of cooks in the kitchen, how do we know which? Which viewpoint, which perspective is correct in giving us the information? And so I'm thinking about that. And, um. I guess I'm just concerned overall about the question of if we were to give money to the element, to. The elementary district was going to give money to the region. Then next year, when they get their three or four percent, if the town is still working under that perspective or approach. That, um, then it's based off the, um, amount that's in the budget this year, which is now less because we put money over there. When I feel like big picture, what we want to be doing. You know, in any way possible is looking on the revenue side, looking to not make the cuts in, in both places. I don't know, um, and, and again, to not have cuts that happen to happen near the classroom. So. I, I don't know exactly how that relates to this motion, except to say that it, it isn't what I was looking for.
All right. I will say we do, do not in fact have a motion. We have a recommendation. Yeah, yeah, just, okay, Irv, I think you wanted to.
Yes, I, I just want, want to make sure that I'm being heard very clearly. Uh, my understanding is that the presentation made. Uh, by Dr. Fay Brady indicated to us. That the cuts that were proposed to the special ed would not have any material impact on service delivery. That's what I heard. If that remains true. Then those positions that were affected by the proposed cuts should be considered to be a part of the cuts. But certainly, we should not be in any way, manner, shape or form. Considering cutting the instrumental music, music program. So if it sounds like I'm putting pressure on Dr. Fay Brady, I want her to come forward and tell us. That the positions that were proposed to be cut, that will not have any material impact on the programs. Uh, the special ed programs. She needs to come forward and say that to us. Otherwise, uh, we will go forward and say we will, uh, not cut the instrumental music program. And those positions proposed with, for a special ed, uh, would be cut. Uh, and any additional monies then would, uh, that were there that the committee thought would. Could best be used to support the region would then be used. Otherwise, th- this is a non-starter for me.
I have a question for Doug. I, I have been assuming, and again, we can't talk about the regional budget, but the region is having a meeting on Wednesday of this week. And we'll be discussing the budget there. So I assume you're looking for guidance tonight so that you can potentially. Adjust the regional budget. Is that the case?
That, excuse me, yes, that is the case. And so it, it, it is a factor in trying to prepare and, and have that conversation on, on Wednesday night with the regional schools. Uh, just one other thing I'll, I'll hopefully be more clear on and hopefully not lose my connection. Um, but I, and I think it get back to both the question that, that, uh, Irv posed as well as one that Bridget posed. And so, uh, Dr. Brady spoke specifically to special education services. And I think the thing I want to do is broaden the conversation a little bit when I was talking to the building principals and administrators about it. When they talk about, um. The co-teaching model with special education teachers in the classroom, there's the specific special education work that gets done. Uh, that meets the requirements of IEPs, and then there's additional aspects of that, that, you know, the boundaries are not rigid. You know, because we're doing it in the classroom, the ability for the adults in the classroom to provide supports. But, you know, sort of beyond and in addition to the S, the strict SE, uh, SE requirements in IEP. Uh, I think that's the piece that's, that's more at, at, at risk here. And that's part of what, when I was talking to those building administrators, that they were, um. Speaking to as far as why it, you know, they were motivated and, and recommending, uh, the, the SE positions. And, and why those had a greater impact for them as, as building administrators because of the SE impact plus. More, more broadly, the other impact those, those folks have in the classroom. And again, it is, it is entirely, you know, I mean, I, I, I offered my opinion to you guys as to what, what, based on what they told me. And I fully respect the, the, the feedback that you guys provide, uh, relative to this. So, so it's, it's perfectly fine. If you guys, um, whatever direction you choose to, to go, I will follow the, those, those recommendations. I just wanted to provide you that context of, of conversation that I'd had with those, with building administrators.
I have another ques- thank you. I have another question, um, regarding the, the, does it hurt? Would it hurt our, uh, increase next year if we, if the Amherst. District gives up some money to the regional school? Would it all come to the Amherst Elementary Schools and then we just basically make them a gift? Or do we say to town council, no, thank you. We don't want whatever amount of money. Give it to the regional school and it never comes to our appropriation.
I think that's also part of the conversation with the council about how they choose to do the appropriation, whether, whether it wants to be or should be considered a part of the, you know, sort of base assessment number. Technically, it's not. Um, so I think it could be either way. And if, if, uh, if this committee wanted to, you know, uh, not have it add to the sort of base amount that, that Amherst considers as regional school support. That's fine. We can tell them that. And when we calculate, you know, fiscal twenty-six from fiscal twenty-five, we can do it based on. On the, the projected amounts at four percent as opposed to the actual amounts that might end up being formally, uh, used by each district. So I think it, it could go either way, I guess, is the kind of less than specific answer. But it doesn't have to necessarily sort of, uh. Undermine Amherst next year if, if that's not the direction you want to go. So it can be a one-year appropriation for the, for the regional schools and not alter the, the base number for future projections.
But would that decision be up to us or would it be up to council?
I, I think, I mean, technically it's the council, but I think it's also one of those things that, that your recommendation relative to that, they would, I think, consider very carefully. Um, and so I think it's really, it's, it's a bit of. Uh, the conversation with BCG can have relative to that. And, and if, if the indication from the Amherst School Committee is that we'd like to, you know, I'd like to provide this money to the regional schools. And we don't want it to impact our base for next year. That's all part of it. And so that's really in, in as much, uh, it, it, as much as anything, it's a direction to the, to the town of Amherst Finance Department. On how they keep track of it for their future budget planning and, and that sort of thing. But I think you could be directive to the, as a, you know, a memo to the town council with regard to that if you choose to.
Sarah.
Let me just go back around the, this, that my cert, my square. Jennifer, do you have anything more to state or ask? All right, Deb?
Um, yeah, so. I'm not adverse to sharing or minimizing the pain. Um. I had a thought. I, I'd like to leverage something out of that. Um, in particular, I'm thinking about the sixth grade move to the middle school and perhaps, uh, reducing our rent of the building from the region. Um, related to that, uh, but again, looking, looking more broadly than this two months into my position here. Um, I'm interested in knowing, because I, I heard Dr. Brady say we might come back and ask for those positions back should we find the need for them. Um, and, and clearly if we eliminate the, uh, the, the band posi- uh, I'm sorry. The instrumental music position, that is not easily restorable in terms of the program and its, um. Context. So I, I kind of like to know. And again, asking questions, I, I think we don't really have the answers to. But if we save a position at the high school with some of the extra money. Next year, are we just looking at cutting that same position because we have the same fiscal situation? So what is the long-term?
I, I think, I think we have to not talk about what might happen. I mean, it's really awkward because we, because we sit on both committees.
Well, that's what we're facing though. We're facing.
I, I know.
Decision to share and I, I need to know more about, am I just saving a position for a year?
Right. Well, we're not going to.
The elementary school level. I, I think that is germane.
Yeah, but, uh, we won't, we can't know tonight. Anything about what money might be used for in the regional budget and therefore we can't. And we're not meeting with the regional, regional committee tonight. So all we, all, I think all, all we can imagine is that the region just gets a sum of money and then that committee would decide what to do with it. So, you know. I guess. I don't have, yeah, I don't have an answer for you. Um, could I, Irv, go ahead.
So here's where I stand and will be voting if we, we vote. One is that I do not wish the instrumental music program to be cut. If I'm, if I'm hearing correctly from Doug, the building-based administrators agree. That the, uh, special ed program should not be cut. If those two things are true. Then I want those two things to remain in the budget. Fully remain in the budget. And that whatever else we, uh, remains after that. We then give to the region.
So that's what I would propose. So I, I'll just propose as a mo- maybe we're ready for a motion. To writ- to apply from this extra, you know, funds, funds from the town of Amherst from this extra. Two hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-one. Apply funds to res- to restore or. Eliminate the reductions. For the two special ed professional staff, academic, the in, one instrumental music. Professional staff position and the one pre-K preschool para educator position.
Second.
Now then, what do we? All right, that motion, if it passes, doesn't say anything about the remaining funds.
No.
But, right.
Yeah.
So we want to.
I second that motion. So.
All right.
We need to then.
Yes, we can.
Come to a vote.
Yeah. Does anyone want to speak to that motion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I, I'm, it's unclear to me if the, well. You know, the, the school committee's job and purview is to approve the budget. And we also give input to the superintendent on line items. I don't know that, I don't know that it's. Standard practice for us to have motions on specific line items. That being said, maybe just the, the motion is just, this is the guidance we're giving to the superintendent and, and that would be fine. Um. So. The, I mean, the, the default, my, my understanding was that the default would be. The Amherst Elementary Budget gets this extra two hundred fifty-nine thousand, and then the, the superintendent would recommend what to do with it. And then the school committee would vote on that. Like that's, the default is, it, the money just goes into the elementary budget. And so we're making a motion now on a portion of that money, two hundred thirty-five thousand out of two hundred fifty-nine thousand. We haven't said what's going to happen to the rest of it. So I just, I'm, I'm, I, I don't want to get bogged down in process. And I'm in favor of restoring those positions that are in the motion. I just, I'm, I'm unclear as to how this process fits in. But.
Yeah.
I will vote in favor of it. Just.
Uh, you, you reminded me of something I had thought of earlier and then forgot, which is we, I don't think we do want to vote piecemeal. So I think it would have been better for me to move that we. Direct the superintendent to restore, just to restore those positions.
Correct.
Is that, is that as opposed to speaking about? I mean. How do we advise him then? We just say, no, we reject, we reject.
I mean, I think we just don't have a motion to transfer or whatever, give the funds to the region. And we just go with our standard process, which is we just accept the, what the town's giving us. And then we, our input to the superintendent is restore those positions. That leaves us with another, I don't know, like fifteen thousand that the superintendent can decide what to do with. But I, I.
And keep it all within?
That's what I would like to do, but that's not what we're talking about yet.
Well, okay, um. So Irv, would you be willing to withdraw the motion? I mean, I made it, you seconded it. Could we withdraw it and just?
What, what, what we put in his place? In other words, we, we, we.
We could just say, as Jennifer was saying, we could just tell the superintendent, we reject this recommendation. We just reject it.
All right. That's good enough. And then we can get together in our next meeting and, uh, vote on this.
All right. Does anyone?
I would, I would draw that then.
With.
Actually, you have to withdraw.
All right, I withdraw the mo- do we have to vote to withdraw the motion? No, I don't think so. All right, that is withdrawn. Deb? No, I don't think so. All right, that is withdrawn. Deb? You're muted. I or some, I'm not hearing you.
Deb, you're still muted.
How's that?
Get better.
So I think there's still some money left. The two hundred and fifty nine thousand minus those positions um, still leaves us with a little bit of extra money.
But we're saying we're not going there. We're just rejecting his proposal.
And would we give him guidance about what to do with that or we're just not going to say anything?
I I I think the guidance is pretty clear.
Um, I am not clear on what to do with the remaining twenty four thousand dollars.
Well, he he's the one who's going to revise the budget, right? So.
Yes. Right. As long as he know, he understands that we've rejected his proposal. He has to come back to us with a new proposal on which we can accept or reject or whatever. But this proposal is not acceptable.
I just wanted to just jump in because I talked to people on a few other school committees. And in some of those districts, they, some of them write the budget. I don't want to do that, not saying that per se, but and then some of them vote like this line item. So I think what we're talking about is like a difference in practices or maybe the culture of Amherst School Committee and how we do it. But I don't want to, like, over the long term, say that if, um, you know, if we need to get into the weeds like that, that we're just not able to. I think that'd be the first thing. And then the second thing I was thinking about was just the same as Deb is that there'd still be a little funds left there. I I think the question is, like, do we feel comfortable at this point that we could send it back to Doug? And like his, and he sort of hears the guidance. And then if there is something left, are we, are we willing? We, I think amongst ourselves, we need to say, like, is that, is that helpful? Is twenty four thousand dollars even helpful in the context of one point six six million? Because
Right.
We need, we need much bigger solutions than this.
Right. I I also had that feeling that any money we might pass on to the region would be such a drop in the bucket that. Um, all right, Jennifer looks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a suggestion. So, okay, so the motion's now off the table. We have a written recommendation from the superintendent. And it seems like we're all, the five of us are on the same page about restoring the two special ed positions, the preschool parent and the instrumental position. So while I, while I, sorry, Sarah, I don't, I don't remember exactly the wording of your motion, but I I think it would behoove us to pass a motion that it that that instructs or suggests or provides guidance to the superintendent to do that, to restore those four positions. So that, like, we're on record as doing it because, like, we talked about this last time and it didn't, I feel like it didn't, it didn't stick. So if we make a motion, we're we go on record as saying this is what the Amherst School Committee has has said for our guidance.
Yeah, we could say, so that that restoring these positions is a high priority for the entire school committee. That seems, that seems pretty clear. Would people agree to language like that?
I I have no objection to that language as long as we give specific guidance to the superintendent in terms of what we believe is necessary and that those cuts will not stand.
All right, so a motion could be something like we move to reject the superintendent's recommendation and want him to and want him to understand that the school committee considers restoring these four positions to the special, the special education and instrumental music to be a high priority.
I can, I can second that.
Can we modify it a little bit? Because he did recommend restoring three out of the four positions.
Maybe we just have a counter recommend or request
Yes.
in in light, in light, in response to his memo.
Well, and Sarah, does it even need to be in response to the memo? Can we just say, I move that the Amherst, that the I move that the Amherst School Committee recommends to the superintendent of schools to restore all five suggested cuts in teacher positions to the, is it five or four?
Four.
Or all four suggested cuts to the, um, to the school budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five. Clear message.
Does that include, that doesn't make sure that that includes the instrumental music program.
Let's put a, right, let's, we'll put that in and we'll say, I move that the Amherst, um, School Committee recommend to the superintendent to restore all four teaching positions, instrumental music, special education academic two and one para professional for the preschool into the fiscal year twenty five budget.
Into the proposed?
Into the proposed, yes, thank you. Proposed fiscal year twenty twenty five budget, yes, Deb.
Can I say that twenty five thousand, twenty four thousand dollars is still a para position? What we have left over is still one person's position at the middle school or high school.
But we're not, we're not saying we're silent on that issue.
Yes, we are.
We're silent on it. We're not, and we're and we're also not saying, sure, give some money. We'll give some money to the regional school committee. We are just, we're sending them back to the drawing board.
Could we try and pass this motion and then if we want to make a second motion on that, Deb?
Can someone make a formal motion?
Yeah, I think they were, they were about to. I I I jumped in.
Yeah, I I think I've got it. You want me to try it a third time?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I officially move that the Amherst School Committee recommends to the superintendent to restore the four elementary school positions, instrumental music, two special ed academic and one para educator for the preschool to the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty five budget.
That's, I can second that.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, any more discussion?
One, one, one more thing. Uh, I I really want people to understand that our base budget that we have right now is the one that will be considered for the fiscal twenty six budget. And that memories are short and very short. And I don't want, wish to come back and battle over, hey, this is your baseline, uh, minus whatever. So we need to keep that in mind as we go forward.
Are we ready for a vote? I think so. All right, Bridget, how do you vote?
Aye.
Herb?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that passes unanimously. Doug is still here, so I'm sure he's.
I appreciate the, the, I just want to, you know, mostly what the idea was is to give you options to consider. And so that's, that was helpful to me as far as as how we want to proceed. I will say this, just speaking of, since we were talking about sort of what's left after you take those out, there's a nine thousand dollar line that that talks about staff production, you know, staff turnover savings. We won't have those if we retain those positions. So the real difference is about a little over fifteen thousand in the state of Ohio. And we can certainly, you know, without, you know, a direction from you to to potentially ask to have it used in the regional budget, it will be utilized in the Amherst, in the Amherst budget. So if you want to offer a suggestion on that, that's great. And if you don't, then it will just remain within the Amherst Elementary School budget.
Doug, we don't, we don't have to decide that tonight. We can decide that at our upcoming meeting. Is that correct?
I think, well, I think it's it's helpful for the regional schools. You know, any additional resources that are that are formally available to regional schools will be helpful. But at the same time, you know, it it, and and they will have to vote their budget in advance of 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 your voting of your full budget. And so knowing or not knowing that your your position on that is is going to be helpful to to that conversation. So I think we scheduled a joint meeting on on Wednesday night. Uh, so it could be discussed on Wednesday night as part of that.
Yes, definitely can. We do not have to do that tonight.
I have a question. I I I'm, I'm a little confused. I think, I feel like this committee has said that we are not interested in transferring or giving any funds from the elementary to the region. And and we can still do that on Wednesday because we have another meeting scheduled. I think what Herb was asking was, do we have to decide tonight how to use that extra fifteen fifteen thousand? As I I thought that's what what he was asking. And I just want to say, the next time the Amherst School Committee meets, we will need, we will be needing to vote on this budget. So we will have time at our next meeting to talk about the budget, but we won't have time at the next meeting to talk about it and then send Doug off to go look at something else and then come back. Like, our next meeting is when we'll have to vote on it. So my input to you, Doug, is that that extra fifteen thousand, maybe some of it could be put to that committee action staff reduced COLA. Like, I don't know exactly who is in that. I know it's non-unit staff and non-unit staff deserve COLAs as well. So if there's any equity issues or anything we can do to help those, um, those employees have a better COLA, that that's one suggestion for me.
And my, and my input at this time is, I won't say, you know, fifteen thousand dollars is nothing, but, um, I I think we should just assume it can be well-used in the Amherst District Budget and leave it at that, okay? Because while it is a joint meeting on Wednesday, it's only briefly. So to give the opportunity for us to explain what we did, if we needed to explain anything, which I don't think we do. Um, and there's going to be plenty to, plenty for the region to talk about. Okay, so I I basically, I feel like our position is, keep it. Keep it all. Does anyone disagree with that? That feeling? I don't think so. Okay.
In the end, it's one percent of what we're missing in the region. So I don't think that it's impactful enough to start a precedent in that way.
Right, or take up very much time in trying to figure out how to make, make all these discussions work out given the short amount of time. Okay, so I consider our discussion of the new and continuing business closed unless I've missed something. And at this point, I will show all the, I will share my screen and show all the written public comment and then we will adjourn. And I'll try to.
Sarah, is the written public comment posted on Board Docs?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Would you be so kind as to magnify that for the width of the screen?
Ah, sure. Thank, whoops, no, no, not that way. I mean, I can. Here, okay. Is that better?
Fit button, it'll, it'll auto utilize the whole screen. It should.
Wow, okay, I'm going to have to do a lot more scrolling then. Whoops. Sorry, I cut off this word. It's community. I'm going to scroll fairly quickly through all the signatories. All right, we've reached the end of our agenda, the end of our business, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Take roll call vote. Jennifer?
Abstain.
Deb?
Hi.
Irv?
Hi.
Bridgette?
Just, um, are you abstaining, Jen, because you want people to be able to talk? Or are you just abstaining? Like, is there a reason?
Yeah, we don't discuss motions to adjourn.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes, because I have another meeting.
And I will vote yes. So that's four in favor, none opposed, and one abstaining. I can say any written comment that was received after the deadline will go into the packet for our next school committee meeting, but not this Wednesday, just our next regular school committee meeting on the, I think it's the 19th. Okay, so we'll see everybody then. Thank you for attending. We are adjourned.
Sarah, I know the meeting is officially adjourned, but my four-year-old was incredibly passionate, listening to this for a really long time. Would it be okay if, just for the few people who are left behind, could he recorded a short audio for you?
Yes, that would be fine. It's not an official part of our meeting.
Not the official.
Go ahead.
Buddy?
Hi there.
He was listening in the whole time. Okay, I don't know if you can hear this, but I'm gonna...
Which school do you go to? And do you like your teachers?
Yeah.
Do you like your...
Come here so they can see.
The people that you work with?
Yeah.
Likes Danielle for speech? What about Maria?
Sorry, it cut off. Sorry, one sec. Thank you.
What about Maria?
Oh, I'm not sure why it's doing that. Well, I can tell you what the rest of it said. It said, "Do you like Maria?" Yes. How about Suelta? Yes, and it said, "Do you like music?" Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Good to see you. Good to see your child. Bye-bye.
Thanks, bye.
All right, thank you, everyone. Good night.